Good morning, welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Boardwork session for Wednesday, August 21st, 2024. It's 9:06 a.m. My name is Time Answer, Chair of the Board. With me is Commissioner Emily Claus. We have Commissioners Carolina Mejia and Gary Edwards on Zoom. And public virtual attendance available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Managers Robyn Campbell and Rob Gelder, and Josh Cummings, as well as some folks from our CPED team, so, and prosecuting attorney. So we have four items on the agenda for a three-hour block. First up is an executive session pursuant to RCW 4231101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions, or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency governing body or member acting in official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. Less restrictive alternatives, community housing code update is the topic, 30 minutes is estimated. Board action may follow. It's 9:07. We will be in executive session until 9:37.
Thank you for joining us today. We'll be closing now.
Okay, 9:38. We are back from the executive session that constituted item one on the morning's agenda. We're going to move to item two, which is less restrictive alternative, community housing code update A30, an informational session for the board, and turn it back to Seeped Stock.
Good morning, commissioners. For those tuning in, Ashley Ragan, interim director of community planning and economic development. I'm joined here with, I guess, a member of our staff, and Travis Burns, our resking attorney. We are going to be providing a briefing this morning on the less restrictive alternative community housing code update. Next slide, please. So we're going to be going through a background, a summary of code changes. And it's important to note that the code changes we're putting before you are ones that we've worked very closely with our legal counsel to craft. The process to date, planning commission concerns that reflect what they heard from the public during their process, as well as two sets of motions. One motion that really is based on the what we received in terms of legal advice that stays within the county's authority in terms of putting together a set of code updates related to these less restrictive alternative community housing, as well as an additional set of motions and recommendations from our planning commission, which would go outside of the county's authority as currently outlined by state law. And then, of course, we'll go over next steps at the end. Feel free to stop me at any point with questions. So just for a little bit of background, we had new state housing laws go into effect for sexually violent predators in 2021, and that's related to RCW 7109097. Essentially, what the new legislation included were new private facility options called these less restrictive alternatives. Community housing for individuals who no longer meet the definition of sexually violent predator. It's important to point out that the department, DSHS, already had provisions for public secure community transition facilities. Those are very long titles, and those ones are already regulated in our code and reflected there. These other facilities are new. There is an expectation that every community will have adequate housing options for sexual offenders under the fair share of principles of release. Local jurisdictions do have limited options for regulating the siting of these facilities. Following the new state law, we did have a proposed facility in Plano, 2003. That was called Supreme Living, and there were, of course, a lot of community concerns about that. And the county didn't have any codes in place or review processes in place to allow for an open, transparent, public review process. What you see before you today is a set of code amendments that would provide that transparent process for the community as well as ensure compliance with all of our public life and health and safety codes. So a summary of those code changes, it would touch all of our sections of code related to zoning. So those are titles 20, 21, 22, and 23. 20 is our rural zoning code. Titles 21, 22, and 23 include the development codes for our urban growth areas. Pretty much all zones other than industrial and open space zones would allow for these facilities as long as they are coming in for a special use permit. And just for your awareness, special use permits are those that do get a public hearing before the hearing examiner. They do require public noticing, and that's where that open and transparent permit review process comes in. In addition, the code changes would include a new definition so that there's clarity around what these facilities are and what the county has permitted. And then, of course, those use-specific standards relating to fire, life safety, food handling, recognizing that although they are residential facilities, and we have limitations on the siting of them, they are also commercial operations, subject to the same kind of same kind of fire life safety standards of other operations. And in terms of those siting standards that the state does require, it's a 500-feet minimum restriction from childcare facilities and a public-private kindergarten through 12th grade schools. So our process to date, following Docket, this is the first thing that we brought to the planning commission, knowing that there was an interest in getting provisions on the books in case another proposal was submitted. So we brought it to Planning Commission in April. They held two work sessions and a public hearing, and it's the beginning of June. And in preparation for that public hearing, we really appreciate all the help of the Board, PIO's office. They collaborated with us to ensure that we got the word out to as little more spectrum of our community as possible to participate in that process. Following the public hearing, there was another work session held by the planning commission, and a final recommendation was made. We issued our CIPA at the beginning of July, and do not know anything. And now we're before you with our first work session. So here were some of the concerns raised by the planning commission and reflect what they heard through their public hearing process and the comments they received. The planning commission relayed to staff that they think state law should allow for local jurisdictions to more broadly regulate these facilities, that there's a need for greater transparency in the definitions, noticing, and safety standards, and that the code should treat these uses strictly as commercial uses and not as residential facilities. The planning commission was very engaged. We do have two members of the planning, yeah, just two members of the planning commission here today. And they submitted their own separate letter as well, which they worked hard on to make sure that you all were aware of why they made the recommendations that they did. So there, I'm going to be going through a number of motions that the planning commission shared, and it's important for staff to make sure the board is aware of all the different motions they made. So the first one was recommended adoption of the code package. And this is the one that staff consulted, we had our legal counsel on, and ensured that it would stay within the county's authority. And that was unanimous vote. There were individual topics, though, raised in that primary motion, and we have a table here outlining them. So I'll go through them one by one, but in general, it was determined, at least in looking at this with legal counsel, that these were all outside of the county's authority. So there was an interest in changing the title to less restrictive alternative, state mandated residential facility for sex offenders in treatment. The intention behind this was to more clearly and accurately reflect what the facility is. However, the state does call them LRA, community housing, and deviating from the state's known culture could create its own confusion.
Okay, I have a question about that. Why do we care if it creates confusion for the state? I want the citizens to know what's going on in their neighborhood, so.
But it could create, I mean, if our rule says this type of facility has this requirement, but the state's got a different name, then it could be argued that, well, that doesn't apply to this. This is an LRA.
Well, I think we should always refer to it as deviant sex offenders are coming to the community somehow. I don't know how to do that, but I would like to include that.
And we, even as we notice for the public hearing, we said state mandated housing for sex offenders is part of that title, and so it could be the way that we notice it, you know, on top of versus the definition, the legal definition that is within the code.
Just to jump in real quick. So our staff recommendation, remember, this is where legal counsel provided guidance that it's outside of the county's authority. Doesn't mean that the commissioners can't have a conversation about it, but I think it might be helpful to go through all of these and then come back to them and then have those conversations.
I just don't think the state has the ability to limit our free speech and allow the public to know that violent sexual offenders are about to move into their community. That's all.
I think that you're going to have similar reaction to almost all of these. So I think it would be helpful to continue to just click through.
Yeah, so one of the other recommendations was to change language from may to must, require 24-hour staffing, and trained escorts throughout the applicable sections of the code. Currently, the code just basically echoes what state law says, which is may require 24-hour staffing. But the planning commission recommended changing that to must, so that would go beyond what the state requires. The planning commission also wanted to limit the maximum number of residents to one fewer than the total number of bedrooms in a facility. It doesn't appear that there are any requirements, I'm sorry, doesn't appear that there are any policies that DSHS has around that. And whether it would be within the county's authority to limit the number of residents if all the other requirements can be met. There was also a recommendation to require a sex offender treatment provider license, and that we would maintain that at the county. And any changes or updates to it would be notified to the county within 72 hours. It is important to note that the facilities themselves aren't treatment, aren't treatment facilities. They're residential facilities. So although the residents are required to be in treatment, it may not be provided on-site. In addition, sex offender treatment provider licenses are for individuals and not In addition, sex offender treatment provider licenses are for individuals and not for the facilities themselves. So that might be difficult, a difficult provision for these facilities to meet. And then there was also a recommendation to require siting restrictions to all risk potential facilities, so not limiting it to just those identified in state law, but including a much more exhaustive list. So those were the first set of recommendations that tie directly into the zoning code, and then there is another motion with recommendations that are more procedural and neutral and all outside the zoning code.
We're actually moved on to any questions, we're actually about these items.
And I think this is also a good spot to provide appreciation to the planning commission. They did a lot of work, as you saw, through those work sessions and hearing public input. So they took that public input, and they have provided their recommendations from their perspective. So recognizing that this isn't a value judgment from the staff, this is staff's job to ensure that the board has all of the information and that it's filtered in the appropriate way, and then for the board accounting commissioners to make that decision. So thank you to the planning commission for their hard work and really paying attention, and also to staff and legal counsel for vetting and filtering the information to the board appropriately.
Commissioner? I have a question. I know that at one point Representative Couture reached out, and he wasn't able to make public comment, but he said he, you know, wanted to touch base, and I'm wondering, you know, how did that communication turn out? What were his suggestions, seeing that he is a policymaker at the state level? And I know he's introduced a couple of bills in regards to this previously.
We did reach out to his staff. We were not able to get in touch with him. We did receive the public comment that he submitted and reviewed it, vetted it with legal counsel, but there were no specific recommendations. I will say, as we were going through the public review process, there is a bit of confusion. There are a number of different residential facilities identified in state law, and this gets to the definition part, but there's at least three, two of which are already addressed in our current code, and this is a new one.
I do have one question on that comment that I made earlier. And I know one of the planning commission's recommendations was to change the verbiage. Okay, if we can't change the verbiage, why can't we add to the verbiage? And, okay, we'll go along with their less restrictive alternative, but after that, just continue on. This is a state-mandated residential facility for violent sex offenders. Why can't we put that verbiage in? I don't think our free speech is limited by the legislation.
Well, I can respond quickly to that. I think, I think your point's taken. I don't have the code language in front of me, and I think at some point, there's no reason why you could not provide that explanation in the code that this is dealing with sex offenders that are sentenced under RCW 7109. I think what the staff are saying is that the title of this particular housing is probably a confusing place to put that language, but I don't think there's any problem, Commissioner, of doing what you're saying, you know, trying to make sure that it's clear to the public what these kinds of facilities, I mean, you reference a statute, people's eyes gloss over. So I think there's probably an opportunity to have further explanation. I think what staff are just saying is that the actual title of the type of land use that we're trying to manage here would be a less, you know, less ideal area to do that. But I think there's probably a way to address that question.
At least we can put everybody on notice that the state is putting roadblocks in front of local government to do the community's wishes. They've put restrictions in place. We know it, we're going to address it and work within that as best we can. But the reality is, here's what we're dealing with, and then all the rest of it, they'll at least know what we're stuck with here.
Yeah, the only other comment would be, it technically would be, is court mandated at the end of the day because we're responding to, but which is fine.
We could put that in there. That could be in the verbiage, I don't care, just as long as we allow the public to know, not trick the public. Because if we just do LRA and with a statute, for an example, like you say, they gloss over, they don't know what's going on, you know? We're too busy. Our society is too busy, but let's put them on notice.
Well, we can, we can work with our legal counsel and see.
We can accommodate.
See if there's a way to.
Because there's a lot of things, apparently we can't do because it does violate what's been laid out by RCW.
So our planning commission, although they're really focused on the zoning codes and the development codes, they also tried to think of creative options that might fall outside of that, and we wanted to be sure to share the ideas that they had around compliance, permitting, security, and public safety. So the next set of motions may not live in the zoning code. There are things that would require further exploration. So next slide, please. So we tried to put them in buckets. You will see a little bit of duplication here because it might address multiple topics, but under compliance, requiring sex offender treatment provider licenses to be submitted to the county. The concern with this one is that it's, as we mentioned, those provider licenses are for individuals rather than facilities. The facilities themselves, the LRA facilities, are not necessarily treatment facilities, but that was one. Require violations, be reported to the county. So right now, violations are required to be reported to the state, but a recommendation that we could require that we also receive notice after DSH tells the facility they're out of compliance and closing. We would have to have discussions with the state around enforcement and any kind of feasibility of that. The next one was allowing the county to audit the facilities for compliance. And, you know, our staff really aren't, at this time, trained to do this level of audit. There are also potential professional ethical issues, so we don't, requiring this kind of auditing, you would also have to extend to, you know, adult family homes, group homes. We can't just single LRA facilities out. So there are definitely some logistical hurdles and probably other legal hurdles associated with that one. In permitting, requiring an annual permit renewal, so this might fall under like the business license umbrella. We have a very limited number of uses right now that require business licenses here in the county, but exploring whether it would be appropriate to have business licenses for these types of facilities, as well as any other residential facilities that sort of operate more in this commercial realm.
Do we have some businesses that we do require an annual business license?
It's a very limited number, and we have not had a chance to explore how business license, yeah, how they're administered here in the county. I don't know if anyone else around the table is more familiar.
Say a barber shop. Does a barber shop need?
Given that it's currently not advised, we wouldn't have this conversation, and if it's something you'd like us to explore further, we can. At this point, we're presenting what the planning commission recommended outside of the land use zoning code. So if that's one that you'd like us to explore, that might be an option for action.
The next bucket is that security and public safety, so requiring specific fencing and security measures beyond what state requires. And that is, that's definitely something that falls outside of the county authority under the current state provisions. Requiring all facilities to be contracted with DSHS, this is actually one that is reflected in the code updates, is part of getting the special use permit approved. And then finally, citing requirements distance from risk potential facilities. So this is echoing earlier motions around providing a more exhaustive list of facilities that that 500-foot distance would apply to.
I guess I would be interested in the third piece, allowing county to audit facility for compliance. I mean, I understand what you're saying about, do we have the, do we have the expertise? But setting that aside, if you had that allowance across all facilities, you said, you know, adult family home, you know, you're not singling out, and you can use it as sparingly or, you know, it seems like a safety valve. If somebody identifies, hey, there's a problem, it'll give us a latitude to do something. So I guess that's one where it feels, feels like that one could be not very disruptive, not used very often, but create kind of a safety, a feeling of safety for the community that there is a way to ensure compliance. Like, since we can't require 24-hour staffing, we can't require the higher fences or whatever, you have a way to make sure the rules that we do have are being followed. So I don't know if that's, because it sounded like your explanation there was a little less like, it's not legal, it was more like, well, it's impractical, you know?
I will, I will look to Travis on whether, I mean, we'll definitely, we can have follow-up conversation, but I don't know if you have a quick answer.
So what Commissioner Tremasur's saying, applying it here, all, not just to this LRA, but to all of our group facility, adult homes, so that eliminates the concern about not being equitable.
If I might ask, the concept would be, right, along the lines with Josh is mentioning, but also it sounds more like an inspection versus an audit. I mean, I think that, that may, physical inspection, I mean, you know, I guess.
Audit is more like a, like more of a professional.
Well, it comes with certain certifications and expertise, so, you know, an inspection, we can look into that. I can't, you know, off the cuff, but if we can develop that idea a little bit more, I'd be happy to talk to staff and see what we can come up with.
Is that something the board would like the staff to explore further?
Yeah, I'm open to it.
Okay, maybe that would be one we could look at.
At the same time, I'd like to know, do we have other annual licensing?
Is that something the board would like the staff to explore further?
Is that going to be, isn't that pretty simple? You either look, we have it or don't.
We're putting it out there for the board to provide recommendation.
I'll look to that one as well.
I'd like to hear more about that.
Is there annual licensing, annual operating permit? Do you like that?
So next steps would either be coming back and having another work session to provide feedback on the questions and direction the board has provided, and/or moving forward with scheduling a public hearing to hear from the public, and then setting up a follow-up work session where we would still be able to provide that information, or even be able to provide it in more of an email format prior to that public hearing. But that's the next step in the process, is the public hearing. And then this does not fall in, fall under the same guidelines that are comprehensive plan amendments, so you'd be able to adopt this whenever you're full following that public hearing, rather than having to wait till the end of the year.
I might add, just in looking at that chart, it's three simple steps, but remember, the board has the authority to have as many work sessions where those little arrows are as possible. Every work session slows the process to a vote, and currently, we don't have any guidelines to bring these forward to application. So just thinking about how quickly you want to go to have something in place versus how much time you want to spend having conversations about what you think you might want, having that under consideration.
I, I would like to have one more work session before we, before moving to a public hearing. I appreciate staff bringing forward information today, but I just, I need to sit with it a little bit longer and then maybe get provided some additional answers and having a separate meeting with staff. I just, for me, at this time of moving to a public hearing, I'm just quite not there yet.
I'm good with that. Yeah, I think from what, from what I heard from the board, I would feel like one more work session in a fairly short period of time, and then we could decide what to move on to public hearing. And so that, I don't think we, we should still be able to manage it along that timeline, doesn't that sound right?
Item three, your support in, your support, okay.
And Ashley, in terms of timeline with what you heard, the board direction today, how long do you think we need to research those items?
Probably will have something within the next two to three weeks. And so we can go ahead and work with Amy on scheduling that briefing. We can always push it out if we get the research done that we need, but I'd rather have something on the books so that we can keep it moving.
So say mid-September?
Yeah.
Come back to you, mid-September.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Yeah, Amy, I mean, actually, I would agree, just work with Amy, get something on the books, and if you need more time, go and push it a week out.
Thank you for the, I just feel like that was really, thank you guys, and thank you for the, I mean, that was comprehensive and easy to follow, and seems like.
Staff did a good job.
We're doing what we can within the bounds that we have to work, so, thank you, Hannah. It was kind of a touchy topic, so appreciate all the effort to get to the precipice of a change, code change.
Sorry, I left a kind of a touchy topic.
I agree, that's, I would appreciate of the planning commission's work and input on this process, and I know they've spent quite a bit of time.
Okay, let's move on to item three, conservation futures update.
Just get the right paper inside me, I apologize, I have too many. Good morning again, commissioners. Just shifting gears to a slightly different topic, this is a follow-up.
People, people online can't hear most of you talk. I didn't know if you could hear that. Communicators are on.
Thank you.
The only people that they can hear from is three people sitting up there, Commissioner Minster, and sometimes the county manager. People that are sitting back here, I've watched it on YouTube, but they cannot hear how to speak up.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Hi, so, good morning again. Switching gears to a different community planning economic development topic. Ashley Rai, interim director of community planning development, joined here by Andrew Defobus, interim community planning manager. This is a follow-up on the briefing that we held with the board on our conservation futures annual grant program. There was direction from the board to look at whether there was funding capacity within the conservation, conservation futures fund to fully fund the two top-ranked projects. So we're coming back today to just provide that staff recommendation and the information that we received when we met with the budget team, and action can be taken by the board today. You don't have to wait to a Tuesday afternoon meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to Andy to just provide a quick summary of what those two top projects were, and then we're happy to answer any questions.
Before we continue, sorry, just for Commissioner's sake, Megan from our comms team just weighed in and said that YouTube, the volume's coming in fine from all the presenters. I think, you know, the mic here is picking up what it needs to pick up, so just want to provide that. But do speak up a little bit louder so the folks in the audience are here, because we're having to project that way as well.
I usually don't have a problem being loud. It's usually the opposite. So again, Andrew Defobus, interim community planning manager. So the top two projects that, top two ranked projects we saw this year, the first one was the Inspiring Kids Preserve sponsored by Capital Land Trust. This was a five-acre acquisition on Henderson Inlet. It includes 280 feet of marine shoreline, a tributary, two Puget Sound, wetland, and upland forest. The conservation futures request was $350,000, and again, this was the top-ranked project by the ranking committee. And then the second-ranked project was the Elbow Lake Creek from the Squawley Land Trust. This was eight and a half acres of forested wetlands and stream that drained to the Nisqually River. It's, I want to say about 10 miles or so southeast of the city of Yelm, right on the Nisqually River or close to it. The funding request was $189,800, and that was the second ranked.
And so we, we met with the budget team because historically, the board has set the annual grant program award amount at $500,000. We did get confirmation from Robin in summer that there is capacity to fully fund those top two. top two projects, which had come in around $540,000. And I also wanted to let you know that we do have a grant-funded project underway to take a more holistic view of conservation futures. And we'll be coming back to the board hopefully next year with, to have a discussion about, is $500,000 the appropriate amount, given what the board's goals are for conservation? But for right now, given what the historic award amount is and the capacity of the fund, staff feel comfortable recommending fully funding those top two.
And that included a consideration of where the HCP stands and not projecting that we're gonna fall short. That's what I was concerned is that we're considering the whole picture because we've put a lot of strands into that conservation futures. Yep.
Thank you. Can I just ask a follow-on? So it would be $39,000 additional, right? So, but what is, I guess, is it just that capacity? Or could we maybe fund the top three? Or is it just fully funding those two? That's what we have capacity to right now?
Commissioner, do you mind if I jump in? We are, we have met with our finance team and our CPED team to bring those two together. What I was educated on is that CPED was managing one component of it very well, and the finance team was managing the other component of it very well. But their connectivity has been different in the past. And so we were responding directly to the questions that were asked about the two projects, I believe. If you want us to go back and look at capacity, we can do that, it'll just take a little bit more time. Because we're not prepared to answer that question on the fly since there are some components that the team has just started to talk about and look at, what does the dollars in those buckets really entail? And what should we be prepared for if land becomes available?
Can I, I wanted to know, like, what's the full capacity, right? So I apologize if I wasn't clear on that last time. Because I wanted to know, like, what is it like right now? Is it, and so I appreciate that we're coming back next year. I guess my suggestion is going to be, I would like to move forward, right? I wouldn't want to keep delaying the first two additional projects. But I would like to have that conversation of, well, there's three other projects in the hamper. I would like to see, like, what is the actual capacity? Do we have capacity? Or is it just, you know, ultimately at 539 and that's it for now? And then in the future, we might be able to reassess.
We can do that analysis, Commissioner. It'll take us a few weeks to sit down as a team to do that. To Commissioner Mentor's point, I'm still getting up to speed on the complete scope and universe of what those funds are for. But give us several weeks and then we can come back in a work session and talk about that because I think it's not gonna be a black and white target number. It may be a conversation where there are things we want to be prepared for. And in preparing for that, we're gonna need the commissioners to weigh in and give some policy direction on comfort level. I think what the team has expressed to me in their initial conversations is, you know, they have to be ready for opportunities when land comes available. And there's not always a fixed amount we know going into it. And so the more flexibility we have, the better, so that we can seize opportunities in environment where I understand that this type, certain types of land, mitigation land, are becoming increasingly rare in our county footprint.
Right, I'll thank you for that. I'd also mention, this is a board-managed fund, again. So CPED is coming to the board with a concept for conservation futures. So if the board wants to have a holistic view of the budget with conservation futures, that's a board conversation to have. CPED is coming for a very minimal piece of that in the conservation futures, which the board set that at $500,000. So they're kind of two different things playing in the same pool. But I think to the county manager's point, we can definitely work with the budget office to ensure that conversation goes forward.
Commissioner Fornier?
Thank you. I think it's great that CPED and the budget officer are connecting the dots, I too am interested in capacity. There, you know, there's one project with a very small ass that I do think it was kind of undersold. And it, you know, that one, the last, would connect another little piece to a pretty much like a vast amount of land that's already been put in conservation through this program and through other programs. And even, you know, a partial funding for that, I think, would put the applicant in position to secure that land. So if there is capacity, I would be advocating for consideration.
So again, this is a board-managed fund. And the board has set CPED to facilitate the ranking committee. CPED is not coming up with these recommendations on its own. This is the ranking committee that Conservation Futures has. But again, the board has authority over this fund.
So I think there's opportunity for us to bring the fund. And I really appreciate what Josh said about it, you know, forward-facing fund. But bring that into context for all of you and talk it through so that you can weigh in from policy level, providing some direction as we move forward.
And I understand HCP land and, right, like, the, that whole navigation process. And that's like a priority, I think, for all of us, is being sure that we have enough capacity if an opportunity comes up. But I think when we're talking about, like, okay, like, how much are we saving for that? And then, you know, is there capacity to, like, expand as these opportunities? And I think this is the first time in a long time where we've had these many projects. So I just, I think it's just a good time for the board to really have that conversation and see how we move forward.
Just confirming that there's an agreement from majority of the board to do that?
To have a follow-up on this, yeah, that's fine. I'm gonna make a motion to fully fund the first two projects based on input we got from staff today.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion on that motion. You know, Commissioner Fornier is advocating for number five.
Yeah, I just want to ensure this doesn't close the book on this discussion. This just funds the first two and allows for further discussion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed. Okay, we have a decision there.
So with that motion, right, yeah. So a couple of weeks until we have, like, a follow-up discussion, a month?
Probably a month, just to be safe. Because with all the budget, I don't want to overcommit the budget team, they got a lot. I could feel them grabbing the back of my head.
What? No, they don't have a lot.
You met us, county manager. So a month would be ideal. If we weren't in budget season with TC Connect, we could probably come back in two weeks.
Yeah.
But a month, just to get everyone timed to...
And definitely, like, keeping the other three projects in the hamper. And, you know, I think if the board, after having that discussion decides, maybe we can stretch out a little bit more, then we can have that discussion at that time. Or if the board's like, actually, no, we want to be sure in that we're being conservative and watching out for new opportunities then.
Commissioner, the hamper's for dirty laundry.
The hopper, there we go. No, I think that work session will also be a really good opportunity to talk about forward-looking on HCP. Because we have been in conversation with a lot of our partners, and there are opportunities starting to present themselves. So we'll be able to share that as well.
Take that part of the briefing. Good job, Ashley.
And I will circulate board letters for those top two.
So those will come from your signatures. I'll let you just decide it.
Big thanks to our partners. I know two of them just left, but we wouldn't be able to achieve Conservation Futures' goals without them.
Thank you, Ashley, for your leadership this morning.
I'm gonna go have a cup of coffee.
Well deserved.
Commissioner, items is next, end of the agenda. Anything we need to address? We do have an executive session in the room with the courts.
Yeah, it's the court stakeholder group and...
To kind of address the capital projects that is in response to the board saying,
based on the last executive session, they're wanting input from the boards on almost the same presentation that we gave.
Okay, I will be here to open the meeting. I have it 12:30 offsite, so I'll probably be excusing myself around 12:25.
Okay.
But like I say, we've heard the discussion, we just kind of want to get that input from the court.
And just to be clear for the commissioners, this is with the judges, but we will be circling with other stakeholders pending commissioners' direction. We're not leaving those stakeholders out of the conversation by any means.
Okay, anything else?
I just have a quick question. Do we have a work session on the books for quiet zones anytime soon? I've been contacted by some community members, and I just wanted to check in about that.
No, there's no work session on quiet zones on the books. I haven't received board direction to schedule one.
I know it's been, like, of interest for other commissioners, so I don't know where commissioners are at with that. I could also just kind of meet with staff if we don't want to do a full work session on it.
We put out a really helpful position paper that we can circulate to you.
Okay.
I think we did it, gosh, maybe like the second or third week I was here. But I believe Rob, working with Public Works team and some others, put that together. We can resurface that and give it to you to start, if you'd like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, and if you're gonna check with staff, I think, like, Matt's probably the Jennifer, best person to kind of give you Public Works perspective.
Do you recall that, Rob?
I have it right here.
You can just send it directly to Commissioner.
We kind of hit a, we kind of hit a...
It's a, there's a risk issue.
A liability and risk issue. And I still didn't, I personally didn't feel 100% clarity about that, but that's kind of where we got hung up.
Yeah, that's what I heard. And I did have a meeting with the staff and some of these constituents, like, early on when I was first, when I, you know, first started. And it sounds like they've done quite a bit of research on the liability piece. And so they're trying to, they're interested in coming back for another conversation.
Although I heard that same story before and asked that they bring that forward, and they never did, about the liability exemption issue.
They did to me just recently, within the last few days.
Maybe if you circulated that, that might help the rest of us.
I can do that.
Can get Travis or...
Okay.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.